Evening, everyone. Going to call our Shelton City Council meeting for July 2nd to order. Please rise for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undegined, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Donna, would you like to call roll, please?
I will. Councilmember Dorsey.
Here.
Councilmember Inesco.
Here.
Councilmember Cronz.
President.
Mayor Rogers.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember McDowell.
Present.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, do we have any changes to the agenda this evening? Oh, the city manager does? Go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'd like to add an executive session toward the end of the meeting. I would call it G. point five, I guess, for 15 minutes to discuss the potential sale of surplus city property.
Okay. Is everybody good with that?
Sure.
Fine.
Okay. Anything else on the agenda from the council? Okay, hearing done, we'll move forward. Council report, so I'll start with Councilmember Dorsey.
All right, I, aside from my regular council briefings with Jeff, I attended the Blues and Brews. I think most of us were down there, and I think that was the 15th. And then last night, I attended a little meeting over here about the basin three sidewalks and paving, and I'm glad I did. I thought Craig did a really good job with that, and Jeff was there also. And then on the 16th of July, I have a Mason Transit Authority Board meeting, and that's about it right now.
Councilmember Inesco?
Besides our staff briefings and our week at Spokane at AWC, that was my week. And nothing next week, yet.
Councilmember Cronz.
Well, along with most of us, we spent three days over in Spokane, Washington, at the Association of Washington Cities Annual Board Meeting. And I took and was involved with four main classes. The classes that I took was concerning issues on homelessness. And the sponsor or the main speaker was the mayor of Olympia and talking about, you know, they went from, I don't like, 70 homeless to 400 homeless in a very few months. And they had to drastically address that issue, and so it was very beneficial to hear kind of what other cities are doing about that. I took a class on storytelling, talking about storytelling and communicating, you know, and a little humor, and storytelling diffuses anger sometimes, in some cases.
He tells the story?
I, I, I love you all.
All right.
There you go. So, anyway, I took a public comments about how different councils in the state deal with their public comment period, and so it was good to be, get a little refresher course on that. And then one class that I was in was talking about how some cities are dealing with affordable housing issues, and many cities are changing their codes to allow more small mother-in-law houses in existing neighborhoods to increase densities and things like that. And so it was extremely educational on that front. So, that concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember. Last week, I also attended Association of Washington Cities Conference. Some relevant topics included budgeting, some utility rate setting. Interesting one, a local investment networks that Winthrop and the Metta Valley is using, which was quite interesting. Next week, or this week, I'll have a Mason County Housing Authority meeting. And then next week is pretty open again at this point, so. Deputy Mayor Peterson.
Two Fridays ago, I had the meeting for Peninsula Regional Transportation Project Organization. We've completed moving over from WashDOT to having Kitsap County manage that, which was voted on this group a few weeks ago, so we had our meeting in June. Last week, I was at the Association of Washington Cities and attended several workshops, including regional and local public sector strategic planning, which fits in really nicely with PRTPO. Took an economic tour with Liberty Lake, which is a city of about 11,000 people, but a planned community, a different model than we have here, which was very interesting. Also attended one on behavioral health and impact to communities, which dovetails nicely with the opiate stakeholders group that meets here in Mason County, and that meeting will be next Wednesday. And also, a really interesting running effective public comment session, so how we engage our community in topics. So, other than that, I have my meeting next week on Wednesday for the opiate stakeholders, which will be at Skokomish Community Center, and that concludes my report.
Thank you.
I also went to AWC this last week and took several classes. I'm not going to go into what I, what they were, but one of the highlights was being able to carry the city flag. It has never, I don't think it's ever been done. Have you carried it before?
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. So, it was honored to have that flag with the parade. How many cities were there? There were, oh, many, many cities.
Forty?
Yeah, had flags. So, that was pretty fun. I had my left board this meeting, or this morning, and celebrated on the 4th, and, and briefed with Jeff on the 12th, and I think that's my week or two.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Good evening. Easy week last week, and not much going on. Had a couple constituent meetings, and next week, Thursday, I have EDC Board meeting, and happy Independence Day to all. Stay safe, and let's not burn down the city. Fireworks are banned in the city limits, so I'll continue to push that message, so, yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Schmidt. Okay, now's the time for first period of general public comment. Do we have anyone signed up?
Not for general public comment.
Okay, thank you, Donna. So, move right into our consent agendas, or motion to approve the consent agenda as published.
So, move.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion of second to approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Okay, motion carries. Next, we're moving on to the business agenda, and our first topic is our fee schedule. So, I'm going to open the public hearing on the master fee schedule. City Manager Jeff Knight has details for us about the master fee schedule.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of the public. Tonight, we are looking at the new and revised master fee schedule. And not to just read off the sheet, but as you all know, we've been working on a master fee schedule since at least January, and even prior to that, back into late last year, to update the master fee schedule that is intended to recover costs associated with services the city provides, notably building, planning, and engineering permitting fees. When we looked at this, we looked at the actual time that each permit, on average, takes to review and approve and get out the door, so that people can begin investing in the city of Shelton. We, three highlights of the draft, the proposed draft. We have a maximum building permit fee of $50,000, so no matter what your project cost is, whether it's, I think it's eight million was when you get to the $50,000 mark, all the way up to 100 million, if we have a project that size, your maximum building fee is capped. Then you have a plan and review fee that's tied to that, it's 65% of the building fee. So, we did, that's what we did there. A couple other things that we added into this master fee schedule are the ability to do an early foundation permit to allow project construction to move along more quickly and get started more quickly. Prior to the full building permit being approved, we can still continue to work through that process, and that will result in faster permit processing time for both city staff and the contractors that are doing the work. Couple of things that we're looking at, as far as building permits, especially for residences, for single-family homes and multifamily projects, are reducing, not reducing, moving the ICC, the International Code Council, building valuation chart back two years, which saves a little bit of money on each building permit fee. Couple other things we did was take a look at our similar cities, different sizes, make sure we were on par with what a lot of other places are doing, so we don't put ourselves at a disadvantage when it comes to investment in our community. Lastly, we took a master fee schedule that was, I believe, 19 pages in length with five different appendices, and we condensed it down to a total of 18 pages, eliminating approximately 50 permits along the way, 50 different line items. I have all those here, I can go through them all if you like, but I don't, don't think people want to listen to me read off a spreadsheet. But we definitely have those available for review if anybody is, is interested. We remove those fees in order to streamline, streamline the process, make it a little bit easier, and make it compatible with our upcoming vision for the new Land Use and Development Code, which, as you know, we'll begin working on later this year. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have, and hopefully, we've put something together that will work for the council and people interested in investing here.
I have questions. Yeah, I don't have a question, but would you pick out a couple of those line items just to read off, just to give everyone a kind of a feel?
The ones we eliminated?
Just, just a few.
Sure.
Just pick, pick a couple.
So, one of them, let's see here. We eliminated the line items for residential and accessory building valuations, temporary use building permit, review of supplemental environmental information on land use planning applications. For plan adjustments, we had administrative approval and commission approval, two different fees there that we eliminated. For site plan review, for one and two dwelling units and three-plus dwelling units. One of the reasons we eliminated that is because one or two dwelling units in the future won't need a site plan review once we get done with our code update. Few other ones, a lot of things that we did was just to make it easier and simpler for people to read and calculate what their fees would be. Previously, we had fees of 23.50, 69.25. We made those all even, so even somebody that's not quite the math genius that her finance director is can figure it out fairly simply with my calculator on my iPhone. So, wanted to make it simple and easy to get through the process and to work with us here at the city.
Thanks.
Other questions for Jeff?
Go ahead.
The early foundation permit. I assume other places have used that. Is there, is there any issue with feeling, once you get started, kind of feeling in a box either the, either the permittee or the city?
There, there is, and for that reason, we, first, we tie the fee to 25% of what the overall valuation for the building would be, and then that's then folded in, so you're not paying twice. But second, the second part of that is that there's an agreement that if something needs to be adjusted at final plan review, that the applicant understands that, and there is some risk. Typically, when you get an early foundation permit, everything's pretty much locked in, but not all the way. But there's an agreement that the applicant understands that there might be a risk if they want to get started early, but it is something we offer, it's not required.
Thank you. Councilmember Cronz?
Just, I'm just going to go through where I marked things up. Is there somewhere in here for stock plans, but we've always allowed stock plans for builders? It's not in, is that fee basically the same, whatever we did?
Yeah, so what we, that is not. And what we can do is, when we rewrite our code, we can add that, and this is subject to, to update. There's several things that are going to be, need to be updated after the new code comes in. Things like fences. If you have a residential fence less than six feet tall, there's really no need for us to plan, review, and go out and inspect it and those kind of things, so.
So, in our last policy, we had a stock plan written in there? Because you get a little discount on that if you do a stock building plan?
I'm not.
I believe that is correct.
Yeah, that.
Correct, so it's still in existence?
50% of the plan review fee.
Right.
Yeah, so there is a discount for it, sure.
It is, and that just carries over. It's not written in here.
Correct.
It's there, right?
Yes.
Okay, I was just going to, a couple things. I, one thing I looked on here, I never knew, do we actually offer an after-hours inspection? I never heard about that.
We, we can, and we will. We, if somebody needs an inspection immediately, and that's been on the books for quite some time, that's supposed to carry over.
Okay, just let me, just, I'll just rattle off a few more things on here.
About one more, and I'll have, and then I'll pass it around.
Well, actually, you know, you can ask somebody else, and then I'll come back.
Okay.
Maybe to clarify, Councilmember Cronz, is this, is this, are you referring to the duplicate residential plan check? Is that where we're getting at?
That, sounds good to me.
That's in there, and that's 50% of the ICC fee.
Yep.
What page is that?
It is on page eight.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anybody else before we go back to Councilmember Cronz?
Okay, sir.
Oh, it's not that, I'm just asking, you know, this is the time to talk about this.
Yep, sure.
I won't take much more time. Okay. All right, so, do you know, basically, let's take a six, a standard, single-family house of last year. Let's call it a 1,000-square-foot home in a, on a, in a city lot. How much, and with the water and the sewer hookup fees and what, do you know how, what percent each more we will charge in 2020 that we did in 2019?
It, it's actually less.
It's actually less.
So, with the trailing of the ICC valuation chart from the current year, which is what Shelton had been using, we updated it, I believe, every August, or September, August.
September 1, it was the August ICC release, yes.
So, with the, the lag of two years, it actually lowers the overall permit fee. We calculated on a 1,500-square-foot house, so that's the number I'm quoting. It is, I believe, $180 less overall. Not a substantial reduction, but there is a slight reduction there.
Okay, just two more.
That's fine, sir.
This is, I think, reasonable. I, I've done this several times, and thought it was well worth the money on a, like, a pre-submittal fee. You go in to a room there with the boys and talk to them about your project, see what they anticipated, and $150 looks like we're, a couple have no fee, but I think that it's, you know, you're getting a lot of advice, and it's better that you know upfront rather than later on. So, I thought the 150 was fair and reasonable, and, and I like that. I especially like the maximum fee of $50,000, because if someone wants to come in with a $100-million-dollar project, you're not going to make it on a permit fee. You're definitely going to make it in on what that project can do for the city. So, that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Any, anything else, Councilmember Schmidt?
Not necessarily a question on what's been completed. I, I believe that this is much an improvement, and I appreciate all the effort that went into this, and, you know, we've, we've been going through this for a little while as well. But when it comes to impact fees, so the word fee kind of being used loosely, right? But at what point, and I know there's the traffic impact fee ordinance, at what point will we be kind of taking a good look at that as well?
So, that is one of the things on my list that we'll take a look at. Those fees are calculated, transportation, and then impact fees for your sewer and your water lines and those kind of things are calculated based on overall projected project cost for the facilities that are necessary to serve the residents that we expect to be here in our comp plan, which is basically a long way of saying, we're planning strategically out, and then we need to find a way to pay for those services. And there are several variables on public cost, on developer cost, and how those things are driven, grant funding, how you put together, basically, your capital facilities plans for all your services. We will be looking at that probably, at this point, I would say, next year.
Okay.
Next, probably about this time next year, and those will be incorporated into this. We have a couple other ideas that we'd like to implement that I've talked a little bit with you all about in the code update, which is an infill ordinance that would incentivize those types of infill projects already in the city limits rather than outlying areas. Other parts of that are, you know, looking at park funding and all those different types of, different types of measures, but that's a large conversation surrounding those, and we'll update the fee schedule again at that time to reflect those changes if there are any.
Thanks.
Anything else? All right, we'll move to public comment. I know we have some people signed up. I invite people to come forward to the podium, identify yourself, and state whether you're a resident of the city of Shelton. So, Donna?
Erin Hall.
Good evening, city council people. For those of you who don't remember me, my name is Erin Hall. I'm here on behalf of Olympia Master Builders. Olympia Master Builders is a trade organization that represents those folks who are in the residential construction industry and associated trades in five counties, including Mason County. Our mission is to promote housing affordability and attainability by making sure the market has an adequate supply and that barriers to construction are as limited as possible. Oh, excuse me. With that said, you guys have made my job very, very easy this evening because you've already discussed a great number of the things that I would like to talk about on this topic between yourselves and city manager. First and foremost, I really want to say thank you to Jeff and the rest of your staff here at the city. They've done extensive and much greater than previously numbers and hours and amounts of outreach to Olympia Master Builders and other stakeholder groups on this issue. We've really felt like we've had a chance to provide meaningful input on the fee schedule, and we really appreciate that opportunity, even if there are points down the road where we do disagree on specific items. With that said, one of our very first conversations, Jeff and I, we talked about one of the more substantial things that all developers, all builders, all folks in the construction trades consider when they evaluate a project. It's not the cost of labor, or the cost of lumber, or the cost of land. It's the cost of risk associated with the project. They need to know exactly what to expect when they're going in, whether it be a single-family home or a multifamily development. How long is this project going to take? What are the costs associated from the city? What are the expectations coming from the city? And when could I reasonably expect to get out and actually get a return on my investment? It's very easy to park your money in the market and get a very reasonable, expectable return on that. To actually engage in home building as a venture for profit-making, or as an adventure to bolster yourself and your family and your community, that's a little bit more risky. So, as much as you guys can do from a city perspective to guarantee that your costs are predictable, consistent, and that the process is understandable to everyone from your local home builder who maybe does two or three homes a year, to somebody looking at larger projects, that substantially increases the chance that you're going to see the kind of development that you want to here in Shelton. With that said, there are a couple of items that we're very, very happy about in this proposal. The first and foremost is the $50,000 cap on permit fees. It's really wonderful, especially when you're talking about larger projects with larger dollar amounts attached, to know that there is going to be a top end of what you're expected to pay. And then, secondly, the foundation permit as an option available to get people rolling on the ground, because every day, a project goes longer, you're going to be carrying more financing costs. That's going to impact your bottom line, and that bottom line gets passed on to the consumer, and in most cases, that's your residential home buyer, that's your neighbors here in Shelton. And we don't want to have to have more fees attached to the cost of home building than we absolutely have to. Now, with that said, we do have a couple of areas with some moderate concern. First and foremost, we would just absolutely love to see more time on the clock. Anyhow, I'll summarize very, very quickly, if I may. There are a couple additional concerns we're already in correspondence with Jeff about, and we hope to bring that to you before next reading. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you, Erin.
Lisa Perry.
President, Lisa.
I'm Lisa Perry. I'm not a personal resident of Shelton, but I'm here on behalf of the chamber today. I'm the board chair and the chair of the Government Affairs Committee, and Erin Hall is a member of our committee, and she's briefed us on a lot of this stuff, so we're really thankful. I also want to let the council know that the chamber hosted a listing session with local contractors to try and get some of the culture and some of the mistrust that's been in the past, and all the feedback we've gotten from all of our members has been very excellent after that meeting, so we really feel like this is a really good step forward. I also want to thank the staff, the city manager and the staff, for all the input they've received on all this. It's been super helpful. It feels like a really transparent process. We have a few issues that, again, most of this is, I have nothing but positive to say. Got a few issues that we'd like to just bring to your attention. One of them, as you know, I was involved in a pretty big project here, and the pre-sub meetings were really important here. And while the pre-sub is a, for a larger project, $150 isn't a big amount. For a smaller project, it might stop someone from doing a pre-sub, which I think is really important. So, we think you might want to look at that to see. I think a lot of cities don't charge for pre-subs just because you want to encourage people to come in and talk before, so we would like to look at that. Variances was another one the Government Affairs Committee thought might want to look at, the amount of it. There's a lot of irregular lots and a lot of lots with infrastructure issues. So, you may want to look at lowering those variance permit costs to see if that's something you can do. And thirdly, on the subdivision costs, the sub, the preliminary fee for the subdivision costs is fairly reasonable for really big projects. But for smaller subdivisions, which is what we've seen historically here in Shelton because of the lots we have available, that's, might be a deal breaker for that, so you might want to look at maybe a tiered schedule for smaller subdivisions of five or 10 lots, that 3,300 or whatever is good for much bigger projects. But I think, so those are the, really, the things we saw. Overall, this is an incredibly good step in the right direction. We really appreciate all the work, and making it simpler was way nicer to go through than the last batch we looked at, so. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lisa.
That's all we have, Mayor.
Okay. So, I'll ask, unless there's further council questions or discussion, I'll ask for first reading of Resolution Number 1147-0169.
Resolution Number 1147-0619, a resolution of the City of Shelton, Washington, superseding Resolution Number 1139-1118, master fee schedule.
Council concur to move that forward to July 16th business.
Yes.
Right? Okay, we'll do that, close the public hearing. Thanks, everyone, for their comments. Appreciate those. We'll move on to the second business item, which County Manager Terry Snitzer is going to share information about a resolution for payment claims. Hi, Terry.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. And the Finance Department is bringing forward to you a resolution to allow us to release payments to vendors in a timely fashion. This would help prevent the city getting late fees as much as possible, and also to take advantage of discounts that are being offered by vendors. We currently have one that we purchased vehicles from, and if we pay within 20 days, we're offered a $300 discount. The process that we have now, it will take us to 21 days by the time council approves our payments. So, this would help us save money. And also, the internal controls will remain the same at, with the three levels of approval before it comes to council. That will not change. This will also allow us to maintain good relationship with our vendors because we're getting our payments out sooner than having them wait a couple weeks or sometimes three weeks if it's a longer month. And the really, the only change that this resolution brings to you is the timing of council approval. So, we ask that you move the resolution to action agenda in, what day is that? The next meeting.
July 16.
July 16.
Okay, questions for Terry?
I don't know about anybody else, but I hate late fees. All right? And I'm assuming that's been going on for years, the way we've been doing it now?
It changed, it, we were paying weekly when, at commission, there was business meetings, so they were approving payments then, so we were actually doing weekly payments. So, but it changed when council came on, and we went to two meeting, two business meetings, or action.
And we'll still be able to, if there's a question on something, it can still go to council? If there's a question on a?
If council has a question and, and on the ones that we're bringing to you to approve, then we will look into that and remedy it as soon as possible.
And I think I read in here that, that Erin will be the, the, the lead on this unless you give it to somebody else, like Terry, for instance. Okay.
We were just talking the phone bill, the cable, you know, just normal bills that we get.
Normal bills, yeah. If there are some big items that still need to come to council for approval, that, that process is still in place.
Yeah.
Anything else?
It's a fantastic idea.
Glad you.
Terry, a couple questions. One is, again, everything will come to council, correct?
It's just.
And, and will they be divided as far as, here, here are the, the payments that have been made, and it's just basically for your view, and here's the vouchers that really need approval? Is that going to be split?
The payments will still go, they'll go out and then it will come to approval, the approval to council. The two, the regular biz, the meetings.
But would those be two separate lists, basically?
They'll be on, they could, we could put them on the same, you know, on one list. Well, we could have the range of check numbers that are, um, used for the first week and there's a second check range numbers on the, you know. Is that what your question is?
Like just paid or not paid?
So, yeah.
Like red or blue?
Yeah, and then the, the bigger items would come back to council, uh, prior to, uh-
Yeah, I, I just-
Yeah, we won't pay anything that, that the bigger items that council has not approved yet. It's just, these are the routine, um, they're the, the, um, items that has already been approved by budget in the budget process, but not except for the bigger items.
So it's the everyday items.
I'm just, I just would like to easily know which is which when we review, when we review the vouchers or view the list. Is that possible?
The voucher list comes out in date or in, um, check range in exactly how it came out in the system.
Okay.
So I'm not sure how I can, oh, we could-
We could highlight them.
I mean, we could essentially- We could highlight them if we know which ones, but, um, if-
Okay.
There'd be no, there'd be no check number next to it, correct, if it wasn't paid?
It's just, because it goes through three approvals. It goes through the department first. They're making sure that the item has been received and the goods and services have been rendered. And then it goes to the accounts payable. They're also auditing that invoice also. And then it comes through me and I'm the third auditing officer to approve that. So if there's anything real odd, I would, there should be something that catches it along the process.
Okay. And then the next question is some of the policies that I, were quite old and I assume those are going to be-
Yes.
In some of the updated policies, correct?
Yes.
Yes, they will.
Counsel, question?
Just, uh, for my clarification, um, we still cut a paper check for referring payments like cell phone bills and stuff like that. Or we pay that on credit card?
I believe those are, um, on a check.
Okay.
We're looking at that process as well.
Okay. Any other questions for Terry?
No.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Any public comment on this?
No public comment.
Okay. So I'll ask for first reading of resolution one-one-four-eight-zero-six-one-nine.
Resolution number one-one-four-eight-dash-zero-six-one-nine, a resolution of the City of Shelton, Washington authorizing release of checks and electronic payments prior to council approval.
Okay. Thank you, Donna. Are we good moving this to the action agenda on July sixteenth?
Yes.
All right?
Yes.
So, so done. Thank you, Terry, for bringing this forward. Okay. Uh, next, community development Mark Ziegler has information about a contract for a library painting and siding repair.
Thank you, mayor, council members. Um, as you'll recall, uh, I brought to you back in, uh, May of this year a contract for the roof repairs for the, um, Timberland Library, William G. Reed Library. That was after we opened bids and the, the bids, uh, had a base bid for the roof repairs and alternates for, uh, painting and siding repair, deck repairs, um, and, uh, oh, deck repairs were split out. So the main deck on the south side and then two small decks on the east and west side. Um, the bids not kept back favorable to the city and to the funding that we had available. Uh, we kicked back all of the alternate bids and accepted the main bid, the base bid for the, uh, installation of a metal roof and soffit repairs, gutters, uh, fascia and rakeboard repairs on the library to NC Structures LLC. That contract was approved by the council and we are currently working on getting that project moving forward. They've ordered materials and we hope to have them started in the next week to two weeks. Um, with the available funding available, uh, we, through the commerce grant, um, we determined that, uh, we most likely weren't going to get all of the repairs done that we originally had slated, including the deck and the painting. Went out to rebid with the painting because of the discrepancies we had in the original bid. We had a really high bid, over a hundred thousand dollars, a really low bid at about seven thousand dollars. So a lot of discrepancies within those bids. Um, most likely, um, there's a problem there. Uh, so we weren't seeing anything favorable to the city in moving forward. Uh, repackage that bid, uh, for the painting and siding repairs, uh, rebid that in June. Uh, received one responsible bid, um, in the amount of sixty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-four, so somewhere between that a hundred and eight and that eight thousand dollars that we received previously. Um, and that's what I'm bringing to you tonight is, uh, the approval of that bid for painting and siding repairs with Jay Linder Painting LLC, uh, to complete at least the primary concerns of that building, which are the leaking roof, substandard roof that we have, and then the, uh, the siding, uh, repairs and painting on that so we can get the envelope of that structure, um, sealed up, uh, I guess, uh, for our, for our winter season coming up and get this completed, uh, this, uh, to, uh, again, moving into rainy season.
Okay. Thanks, Mark. Questions for Mark?
Just a comment. Um, it's great that this is getting ready to roll. Um, no pun, the paint thing, uh-huh. Anyway, uh, but I hope this highlights is, um, the work that we need to make sure we're doing when it comes to budget planning and long-term direction because deferred maintenance costs more in the long run. Um, and this, this type of situation surely highlights that. So, um, doing whatever we can as a council to look down the road, um, of the assets that we own and make sure that we're, you know, doing the appropriate preventive maintenance and funding that the right way, so.
I couldn't help but think if that, uh, eight thousand dollar bid knew he was supposed to paint all four sides.
There was, there was a mistake obviously made, yes.
Anything else for Mark? Is there any public comment on this?
No, Mayor.
Right?
And we're hoping the deck is going to be maybe next-
With council's approval, I would ask that you waive the three-touch rule tonight so we can move forward. We can time the, the painting contractor with the roofing contractor. They obviously have some coordination to do, painting, uh, the fascia boards and some of that work before the gutters go on. And so there, there's some timing there with the, with the soffit painting and, uh, that, uh, that work that needs to take place. And yes, we are addressing, um, well, first and foremost, we've reached back out to the Department of Commerce to see if there's any additional funding available to complete, uh, the entire project, including the decks. Uh, we have not heard from them yet, whether that's a possibility. Um, but we will be seeing a, uh, funding request in 2020 for those repairs, um, regardless if we, uh, receive that funding or not.
And both contractors feel confident they can complete it this year?
Certainly.
Assuming normal, typical weather?
Yeah, certainly the roof, uh, NC Structures that has the roof bid, they feel like it's about a three-week project for complete tear-off and, and replacement. Uh, painting is, is close to the same thing. There's lots of hand painting cutting in around, obviously, the windows and, and railings and deck. The railing has, um, similar to hogwire. And so that's slated to be painted as well, so it's going to be a little tedious, but, uh, but there's a, a lot of prep work because of the deferred maintenance and the condition of the siding and, uh, railing. So, uh, there'll be a lot of prep work, uh, prior to, but they look at about a three to four-week time period as well.
Thanks, Mark.
Sorry, one question that did come to mind. Um, I'm sure it's going to be addressed a little better as we move forward, but, um, any impacts to just library operations? I mean, is there an expectation that the library closes for periods of time or?
We don't expect them to be closed. It'll certainly impact them. We've already been working with them with some of their outdoor, uh, youth programs and moving those to some local parks, um, just because of the nature of the work. Uh, so we've worked on rescheduling some of those with the, with, uh, Timberland Regional Library. Uh, and then we have to have our final, uh, kind of meeting for, for staging and development, uh, what areas we need to block off for safety, areas we need to block off for staging. Um, it certainly will limit some access down there, but that's just, you know, it's going to be the nature of the project and we'll work best we can. Uh, one of the benefits is the library doesn't open until 10:00 AM. So deliveries and, and major infrastructure that shows up on site when the flatbed shows up with all the roofing, we'll schedule that early in the morning, get it off the truck, get them out of the parking lot and, uh, impact that parking areas as little as possible.
Okay.
One thing that just came to my mind, um, when Joe mentioned that, is I've seen this happen before and I'm sure these people are just reputable as heck, but they need to cover up what they tear off before they go home. Because if it starts to rain that night, all those books are going to be destroyed.
Certainly.
Just to make sure they cover up what they tear off.
Okay. Do we, uh, have concurrence to go ahead and vote on the final, okay, motion? Okay? Does anybody want to propose a motion, please?
I move to award the William G. Reed Library Painting Contract to Jay Linder Painting LLC by authorizing each member of the council to sign the project award form and further authorizing the mayor to sign the William G. Reed Library Painting Contract once it has been signed by Jay Linder Painting LLC.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to award the William G. Reed Library Painting Contract to Jay Linder Painting LLC by authorizing each member of the council to sign the project award form and further authorizing me to sign the William G. Reed Library Painting Contract once it has been signed by Jay Linder Painting LLC. Hall in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to the action agenda tonight and back to Mark for community development. Mark Ziegler is going to speak to MaceCom.
Thank you, mayor, council members. Um, bring you again the, uh, lease agreement, facility lease agreement with MaceCom for their nine-one-one operations center. Uh, this was briefed, uh, previously without any changes to the lease agreement. And this just brings a modern, I guess, lease agreement, current lease agreement, um, uh, to both parties. Uh, the previous agreement had expired and it was rolling over on a year-to-year basis. Um, brings to light, uh, more accurate accounting of services the city provides to MaceCom and the actual, um, fee for the square footage. Uh, MaceCom ha, board has approved the lease and they have signed it. Uh, I'm waiting for, um, council's approval.
Okay. Thanks, Mark. Any public comment on this?
No, there isn't, Mr. Mayor.
So, questions for Mark? Okay. Seeing none. Um, do we have a motion?
I move to authorize the mayor to sign the MaceCom facility's lease agreement.
Second.
Okay, a motion of second to authorize me to sign the MaceCom facility's lease agreement. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Can I go ahead and do the general public comment before the exec session? Is that?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
So do we have any?
We do not have any.
Okay, so, answers that question. So we are now recessing to an executive session to consider the minimum price at which real estate will be offered for sale or leased when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause, would cause a likelihood of a decreased price. Executive session is planned to last fifteen minutes. If extended, time is needed, there will be an announcement. So we'll adjourn to executive session. Returning, returning from executive session and continuing our regular city council meeting.
Oh, my God.
So we're, next will be our administration report from our city manager, Jeff Knight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things I wanted to mention. Uh, the AWC conference that, uh, was mentioned during council reports, I thought it was very valuable. I thought, uh, we all learned a great deal and, uh, it was fun, uh, spending time with those council members that were able to make it, uh, over in Spokane, so. Did, also want to mention, uh, our first Shelton cleanup event will be held on July twelfth at, uh, uh, four areas up on, uh, Mountain View, up on the plateau. Uh, so that event, uh, will be the first one in a series of eight. It'll go for eight consecutive weeks on both the north and south sides of town. One common location, we found that would work better logistically and our partners at Mason County Garbage are helping us out a great deal. Uh, at our next council meeting, we'll be able to give you a preliminary report on the number of coupons, uh, returned to us and, uh, the tonnage of, uh, household garbage that we were able to, uh, take care of for some of our residents.
So where are those places again?
Uh, Oakland Bay Junior High on the north side and Bordeaux Elementary. Uh, not the parking lot itself, but, uh, the streets nearby that makes it easier to circulate on the south side. So the first four weeks will be, uh, at Oakland Bay and the, the second, four weeks, second segment will be at Bordeaux.
Very good.
Um, let's see. Uh, on post office park, we have, uh, had, talked with the, uh, the postmaster there and they are allowing us to, uh, enforce, uh, all the same rules that we were able to enforce before when it was under leases as a city park. So we'll be able to keep that, uh, uh, clean and, uh, an attractive element, an attractive amenity for the citizens of Shelton. Not able to use it yet. We're still trying to work with, uh, the folks that work in facilities for the post office back in Washington DC, but at least it'll keep up the same appearance that it has, has today. And, uh, uh, really appreciate, uh, the postmaster's willingness to work with us on that issue and Chief Moody for, uh, reaching out to, uh, the postmaster and making sure we work through all the various issues to make, keep that an amenity for the community. And lastly, Fourth of July is coming up. I hope everybody has a terrific holiday and a reminder again that, uh, fireworks in the City of Shelton are illegal and, uh, hopefully we don't have, uh, any issues in that regard, but I hope everybody has a safe and happy Fourth.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome.
Okay. Uh, new items for the council to bring up? Anything? Okay. Seeing none. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, July sixteenth at 6:00 PM. We are adjourned.